All right, so we will get started. It is now three oh three on Tuesday, December fourteenth. Welcome to the Audit Subcommittee Meeting of the Springfield City Council. We are joined by Counselor Melvin Edwards, who was a member of the committee. I believe Counselor Allen is also on the phone, who was a member of the committee. In addition, we are joined by Counselor Gomez, as well as Counselor Whitfield, who I believe I saw on the line. In addition, we have Solicitor Pacula here. We have Auditor No from the Office of Internal Audit. We also have Julie Steiner, who is the consultant for the marijuana selection process. And then we have members of the media. Order to know, my thought process is that we will start with you to give us sort of a general overview of how we got here. And to discuss the objectives and the scope of the audit, and then briefly discuss the cannabis selection process. We'll open it up to any questions after you give that brief overview. And then maybe we can go into findings, the findings one by one, as well as your recommendations, and then we'll entertain questions from the council after each of the findings. And then following that, I know the solicitor has a memo that he put out that I'd imagine that he might want to speak to. And so we'll give him an opportunity to speak to that memo, and then we'll also entertain questions from the council. Does that make sense, Order to Know?
Yes, it sounds good to me. Would I be able to share my screen, or do I have that ability?
That's a great question. I hope they didn't leave it with me. But let me give it a shot. I think they did. So I don't want to share my screen, right?
I think you have to make me the host.
Multiple participants sharing screens. Let me see. Can you share now?
You guys see the report?
We do. I do. I do.
Okay. Well, thank you, Counselor Hurst, for the opportunity to present this cannabis review report. But before getting into the report, I wanted to clarify our internal audit report issuance policy, so that it's clear to council members about our policy. It's regrettable that the city councilors had to read about the cannabis review report in the press, rather than hearing it directly from our office. As stated in our website, the Office of Internal Audit releases its internal audit reports on its website only after they've been presented to the Audit Committee, after which time they become public record. This report was distributed to the Audit Committee on December ninth as a courtesy to be discussed at today's meeting. So in the future, we will be distributing audit, internal audit reports only at Audit Committee meetings. As just wanted to chime in on what you said, the format of this meeting, I just want to have the opportunity to present the report. I'll ask City Solicitor Pacula and Advisor Steiner to chime in on some of the findings and recommendations. Then I'll open it up to the floor for questions.
Fair enough. In order to know, before you move forward, if you could send that particular communication with any future audits that you send in advance, it would be greatly appreciated. I'm certainly not looking at your website and didn't necessarily glean that from your course, from our correspondence when you sent out the report. So noted, and we'll certainly follow that policy in the future.
Okay, so page one, how we got here, why we did the audit, we did this audit at the request of Counselor Hurst. Our objective was to determine, were determined if the cannabis election process complied with cannabis regulations as issued by the state and city ordinances. Our scope, we looked at, we looked at phase one and phase two of the cannabis selection process at the city. They occurred on different dates. So before getting into the detailed findings, just wanted to give you my conclusions. Although there were some execution issues like errors in tallying phase two applicant scores and retention of phase one records, the city's process was, the city's selection process was sound. It was objective and fair. So with that, I'll move on to the report and go into, onto page four. Back, under background, I want to point out that in phase one, the city awarded four host community agreements, of which one was to a minority woman-owned business. In phase two, they awarded nine host community agreements, of which six were to social equity minority women applicants. So moving on to page, I believe it's five. This is a flow chart that describes the city's process, selection process. It involves multiple parties, starts with the mayor. We have Attorney Steiner, who's independent of the city, advising on the selection process. Then we have legal procurement involved. You have the selection committee, and lastly, you have the cannabis company applicants. So with that said, I will, you know, I'm not going to go into it until later, if you have questions, but I'm going to move directly into the findings. So.
Young, before you get there, does anybody have any questions regarding the brief overview from the council? Any other questions of, Young No, or anyone else?
I have one question, Counselor Hurst.
Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Mr. No, did you, were you able to talk with everyone that you wanted to talk with in this? You must have a list of people. Was everybody available? Did you, and was it a complete report in that sense?
Yes, we, our methodology included interviewing city employees, Julie Steiner, the advisor. We talked to the administrators of phase one and phase two. I do want to point out that both administrators are no longer with the city, and they were leaving during this process. They were phasing out of their positions with the city during this process. But we were able to obtain enough information for phase two. But for phase one, there were missing documents, which limited our scope. So we were not able to audit that process, or the information in phase one, because the information was not available.
Yeah, I just have one follow-up question on that. When you say the administrators, the administrators, in what department, Mr. No?
So the administrators for this process, former city clerk Davis, Phase Two Attorney Theo Theocles.
Okay, excellent. I see who you mean. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Just a quick question, Order to Know, before you move on, if you could just stay on that flow chart.
Yes.
Just had a quick question regarding the flow chart. Looks pretty comprehensive. Were applicants in both phases able to amend their proposal if an issue was identified by the scoring committee, which is what I see here?
Yes, we noted an applicant in phase one was afforded the opportunity to provide additional information. And they were initially disqualified, but based upon additional information, they were allowed to proceed.
So there was an applicant in phase one? Okay.
Who was able to provide additional. They provided additional information to the city. The city considered it and decided to move their application along.
What was that additional information, and what was it pertaining to? Do you know, Order to Know?
Well, I'm not going to get into the particulars, but it had to do with a zoning issue. And I would certainly, if City Solicitor Pacula wants to discuss it in more detail, I will certainly allow him to do that. But for me, I'm just talking, I'm just going to talk about, you know, the process. The process was similar in both phases.
Understood. So there was someone in phase one who had an issue with zoning and was allowed to rectify. Okay.
Just clarify the information to the city. In the city.
I guess I'm a little confused in terms of when you say to clarify the information, what does that mean, Order to Know?
So the, I believe there was a misinterpretation of their business or their model pertaining to whether they were a school, an official school. So they clarified that they were not a school that had, I believe, kindergartners, but rather a daycare center. So that clarification certainly made sense to the city, and they were allowed to proceed.
So I guess, are you saying that, and maybe the solicitor can clarify? Are you saying that they potentially were in violation of the zoning ordinance because they were too close to a school? And then once they clarified that the school, you know, was, they weren't a school. But once they clarified that they weren't a school, they were okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So they essentially met the zoning ordinance. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, from the application, it wasn't clear. So they clarified that. They provided additional information to the city.
Showing that they met the zoning requirement. Okay, I got it. Counselor Whitfield, I believe I see your hand up in the queue.
Yes, because I need clarification as well, but I think it's clear now that they make clarifications and not changes, because to meet the zoning requirement, you couldn't be within whatever the buffer is for the school, at 250 feet, 500, I don't know what 250 is. But if it's a daycare, it's a different requirement. So I just wanted to say a clarification and a change to the application are two different things. If we're unclear on something, that's not necessarily change, making changes to the application. Correct.
So the, so the process was the same.
And if you don't want to answer it, Attorney Pacula can answer it, or anyone here representing.
I'll let City Solicitor Pacula answer this.
Can we make sure we're all muted? I don't know. It's a little hard for me to see everybody. I think I just was able to do it. Go ahead, Order to Know.
I'll have, this is City Solicitor Pacula, chime in on this.
Okay.
Solicitor.
So the auditor said that the first round, there were changes to the zoning of the application, but to me is not a change, is a clarification that they met the requirement because the, what was perceived as a school was a daycare, so the zoning requirement is different. That's not a change to the application, that's a clarification on what this establishment really is. Is that correct?
In all honesty, Counselor, the discussion of this item from the first phase involves advice from my office to city officials, and I'll be happy to talk to you about it in the executive session or just one-on-one. But it's not something that I think is appropriate for public discussion.
So it was advice from your office, because I don't even really remember this issue coming up when we were reviewing the applications. I don't remember us discussing someone not meeting the buffer zone, but I also didn't go to every single meeting because of the timeframe that you guys held the meetings. I couldn't always leave work to be there. So I don't remember this issue during the review process. And so that's why I'm asking.
I'll be happy to talk to you privately or in executive session, but not in public discussion.
So I guess the general issue, if I may, Counselor Whitfield, was whether someone was able to amend their proposal. And based off of the description that Order to Know just gave, it sounds like there wasn't an amendment to the proposal. It sounds like there just was a clarification to their application, showing that they did indeed meet the zoning ordinance. We certainly can go into more detail, Counsel Whitfield. Not 100% sure why it requires executive session, but neither here nor there. I do want to get through to the rest of the findings, so if there are no further questions, Order to Know, if we could start with finding number one.
Sure. So in finding number one, let me turn to the, go to the actual page. There was a, there was a tallying error in phase two in ranking a retail applicant. Now, this, there were, this one affected applicant scored higher than two retail applicants that were awarded host community agreements. Now, mind you, this is a manual process, and like all manual process, it is prone to errors. So it was unfortunate that it happened, but from what we can tell, it was just a clerical mistake. And you want to chime in on this as well? The response here?
I think my response covered it. I know it was a finding by the auditor, but I could not confirm that there had been an error. I, based on the information I had, the auditor, you know, had some information that neither Tashina nor Theo had. I had talked to them. They were adamant that no error had been made. But, you know, the fact is, there are some records that apparently are missing. I don't know. I don't have personal knowledge of that. And, but there needs to be a better job done in terms of keeping to the records. You know, that I would agree to, but in terms of the tallying error, I can't confirm that. Let's assume it's true. You know, the legal significance of it is really de minimis, given all the circumstances.
So Order to Know, a couple of questions, and then I'll turn it over to, I believe, Counselor Davila, who has his phone up. Question, question number one is, what additional scoring information did you, did you have that the, that procurement didn't have?
So, we noted that a, a score sheet for a particular applicant was mislabeled. And that, the true, a true score sheet for that applicant was missing. So what we did was confirm those scores recorded by the Phase Two Administrator with the respective selection committee members. So that's the additional information. We confirm certain information directly with the, with a selection committee member.
And, and so how many errors did you say there were?
So in phase two, we noted there were 20.
I think it was the eight applicants.
So there were, yeah, eight applicants. There were, yeah, missed scores for eight applicants, which really, I mean, it didn't really affect the rankings in general, with the exception of one retail applicant.
So I guess my question, and maybe it's to you, or maybe it's to the solicitor. What, during phase one, we had a list of all of the applicants and where they scored. Is that, is that accurate? I believe that was made public, where applicants scored. What places, where they placed, correct? Do we know?
I don't know if it was made public. I think the ranking was made public, of who came in first, who came in second. But I don't think any scores.
No, the scores weren't made public, but the rankings were made public. And when I went in search for the rankings, Order to Know, I couldn't find the rankings anywhere for those individuals that place, I believe, the 24 individuals. I'm talking about phase two, I am.
Right. I don't believe those, those, the rankings were made public because the process was not complete. They were, the city was still in the process of negotiating host community agreements. So as, as I understand it, it was inappropriate to disclose such information because it was still, the process was still incomplete.
Okay, and that is still the case, Solicitor?
No, we, I think we have host agreements with everyone at this point, but at the time this was going on, you know, we had the rankings, and then, and so that if we were negotiating with someone, and for some reason we couldn't come to an agreement, we didn't know if we'd be going to the next ranking and so on. But I think at this point, we've got all the host community agreements done.
So it's possible to release the individuals who rent after one through six? Is that, is that accurate? Can the general public get access to that information in some way, shape, or form, Solicitor? And then just as a follow-up question, has the individual finished in number seven, who probably should have finished in number five, have they been notified? And is there any, you know, are there any thoughts on you all's end, how to rectify that?
So let me, let me start with your first question. You know, as the auditor stated, this was just released, supposed to be today. I think that I saw the latest draft, it was November 24th, or November 10th, excuse me. But, you know, as far as this audit's concerned, I think all of us are still reviewing it. And I will certainly look into that issue for you about being able to release that, but it's not something I just prepared to answer today. But I wrote it down, and I will get back to you as to what we can do to provide greater transparency on that issue.
Got it. And I would love the rankings. I mean, it seems to me that we ought to be able to get those fairly quickly. So I would love to know what the rankings are as soon as you get access. Counselor Davila. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, good afternoon to everybody. Auditor No, some quick questions. I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly, sir. You said that total eight applicants had 20 missed scores, or 20 mistakes were picked up?
There were errors in tallying scores of eight applicants during phase two, including a scoring error that affected one retail applicant's position. Right. You know, they could have potentially been awarded a host agreement, but, you know, I'm not in the business of predicting what would have happened.
Right. Now, Counselor No, you, just to be clear, we're talking about this, this is only for the second round of.
Phase two. Yes.
Right, phase two. So this not take scores and the process that was used during phase one at all, it's only phase two?
Yes, just phase two.
Okay. All right. Now, and questions to you, either to you or the solicitor. There was discussion here about record-keeping, a part of this, or paperwork missing. Do we have any kind of policies slash proceeded to safeguard this chain of custody of these materials?
Yeah, that's the duty of the city clerk, is to keep all of our records of the process. I don't know, I haven't looked for these myself. I don't have personal knowledge of what happened. You know, I don't think the scope of the audit was to do anything other than gather as much as could be gathered and issue the report. That I agree that we need to, there's always room for improvement. This is clearly one area we, we need to improve. These records are important regardless of the outcome, and we've got to do a better job of it.
Right. Solicitor, would you please be some kind, sir? If, if we do indeed have those policy procedures already in existence, can you forward that to us so that we can see what they are?
Yeah, it's the record retention rules for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I will send you back.
Very well.
Length, because they're very extensive.
Okay, thank you, Solicitor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Seeing no further questions from the council. Auditor, I think we can move on to finding number two.
Yeah, finding number two. So our second finding has to do with a marijuana, marijuana company applicant during phase two who was awarded a host community agreement despite its non-compliance with the city's marijuana zoning ordinance. So we're here, we're talking about the 250 feet buffer zoning, they were within the 250 feet buffer. But as I stated in this report, they're a transportation company, they have no marijuana on the premise. So it's just a matter of updating the city's ordinance to reflect, I guess, the realities of their operations.
Thank you, Order to Know. I see there's an iPhone James with their hands up. Can you just identify who you are? And if you're a member of the public, and if so, who you are with? iPhone James?
Sorry about, sorry about, member of the public, I was just really trying to, to get an answer for the second part of findings one, which I think we got skipped over. So I was just hoping to get some clarification on that.
So let me do this, James. Let me, let me get through the rest of the findings, and then what I'll do is I'll circle back around to any questions that anyone from the public might have, and we'll entertain them at that time.
Great, thank you.
All right. Auditor No, quick question here. It sounds like there was an application that was in violation of the zoning ordinance. Is that accurate?
Yes, the existing zoning ordinance.
Okay, and so, and so we've in turn, or the selection committee in turn issued this particular individual a host community agreement who was already in violation of the zoning ordinance. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, but I believe it was done so with consultation from legal. Again, it was a matter of the applicability of the zoning ordinance, because it didn't necessarily apply to the transportation company. They had no marijuana on the premise. So why would zoning ordinance be applicable?
So, so Order to Know, I guess, you know, I guess my stance on that is, what did the RFQP say, RFQP say had to happen? And if they were not, if they were in violation of the ordinance? And then I guess my second question is, what happened in phase one if folks were in violation of the zoning ordinance?
So in phase, for the most part, if it was pretty cut and dry, and there weren't any legal issues, and they were disqualified.
They didn't even make, they didn't even make it, Order to Know. They didn't even make it to the selection process. They weren't even scored?
That's my understanding, yeah, that's my understanding. They weren't scored in phase one. But if there were some, some legal issues that, you know, needed to be worked through, you know, they were allowed to continue.
It sounds like there were no legal issues in, in phase one, Order to Know.
With the exception of what I previously described.
Which, which is not a legal issue. I mean, that just is.
I mean, I don't get into that, because I am not a lawyer. I'll let City Solicitor chime in on that.
Fair enough. Sounds more like a clarification to me. So I guess, you know, my, so every other applicant who was in violation of the zoning ordinance was disqualified in phase one. It, it sounds to me.
But in phase one, if I can just clarify, in phase one, they were retail applicants. They had marijuana on the premise.
Very clear, very, very clear. I mean, I don't, I understand. I'm very well aware of the distinction. I guess what I'm, I guess the bigger point that I'm making is if folks are in violation of the law, then we need to get the law changed.
Yes, that's my recommendation, is to update the ordinance.
No, I understand, but, but we can't award HCAs and special permits for folks who are in violation of the law. Right? Which is what, what seems to be the case here. So I know it's not necessarily for you to pine on. I'm just, I'm just merely saying that these individuals are in violation of a zoning ordinance that the city council created. And so if they were in violation of the zoning. And so if they were in violation of the zoning ordinance, it just seems to me that folks should have come to us beforehand to get it right so as to include these individuals. Now, I I understand where you're coming from in that, you know, it 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 may not be as applicable as as one may may think, but the the law is very clear. And it would seem to me that we ought to follow the law and not necessarily pick and choose. And we probably should have done this beforehand, before we even got to the HCA process. And so I guess my last question is regarding the cultivation applicants because I know that was not something that, I mean, that really was the impetus for this this study. And, you know, I know one of the issues was that an individual, a particular applicant may have been in violation of this owning regulations. Did you find that in this particular audit? Because I don't necessarily, I didn't see that in any of the findings, and this seems to be the applicable section.
Yes, so we did not see that as a finding.
You did not see that as a finding?
Right, the city complied with all zoning laws in making that determination of the A and R, as I think City Solicitor Pacula, I sent out a memo about the A and R. In addition, the RFP clearly indicated that a an applicant was allowed to amend their proposal as long as it was not deemed material. Now, when we, when they talk about materiality, it mentions about moving a physical location to a different physical location. Here, council determined, you know, in addition to the A and R, that the moving of of the boundaries was not deemed the material because they were still physically located at that location. We concurd.
You concur, okay. Counselor, excuse me, Whitfield, followed by Counselor Marcus Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to clarify information as it's being presented. The selection committee did not, did not give any recommendations on who the administration chose as the awarded marijuana companies. We scored individually the applicants. It was tallied on a sheet, first round and second round. I know first round I couldn't get access to the tally sheet, although I requested on a couple of occasions. I don't think I got access to the second scoring sheet either. But we did not recommend any of these organizations. We scored them and we gave our scores to the mayor and the mayor selected these applicants. So I want to make that very clear because I heard you say these applicants were selected by the selection committee, which is not true. We scored them, we gave our rankings to the mayor and he he made the determination on who would get the HCA. In addition, the transportation companies mentioned did not score high, I do know that. And I was very surprised that they got chosen at all. So I just want to say that through the process, that is, that was not our role. We did not select any of these organizations. We we scored them and it was up to the administration to choose.
Right, if I can chime in on there, the city ordinance clearly states that process. It's the mayor that decides on the host community agreement upon, I guess, advisement from nine selection committee members. So they have input with this process, their input was a score, how they scored each individual applicant.
Right, and I, the only reason that I'm mentioning it is because the the terminology is being misused and I want to make it very clear that we did not select the applicants. That was on the administration. We gave our rankings as we saw fit, they were tallied, they were all given to the mayor and the mayor chose.
Thank you for the clarification, Counselor Whitfield. And if I also might add, the mayor has said on a number of occasions that he follows the recommendations of the selection committee. And so it would, it would seem to me that he would follow them here as well.
Well, yeah.
Past precedent.
If I can just chime in, that's what he said, but, you know, by law, he's not required to do so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing that point, Auditor, no, I'm very well aware of the law.
And I just want to make sure that it's clear what recommendations mean. It means we gave some scores. It doesn't mean we said we recommend company X, Y, Z. We didn't do that, we didn't choose what companies we would have given the HCA to. We did not do that, we gave scores and they chose.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Council President Williams, followed by Counselor Davila.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, can you hear me okay, I'm on my phone?
I can.
All right, I just had a quick question and perhaps someone on the committee, Counselor Whitfield or someone else can can answer it. I I just had a question in regards to the transportation piece. I was wondering what conversations ensued around whether or not, you know, this giving the HCA to this establishment or the transportation establishment would have been, you know, kind of prohibited? Or, you know, I I just wondering, because I I would think that at at some point, somebody would have reached out to the council and said, hey, maybe we should see clarification on this? Or do something to actually change the law? So I'm just wondering if there was any conversations that happened around that.
So I can tell you from my perspective, Council President, we scored them. These two delivery transportation organizations did not score high. When I say I was very surprised that they got a host community agreement, I was very surprised. So when they were chosen, I think that there were some issues with the applications in the first place. So I didn't, I I was shocked when I seen that they received host community agreements from. So it wasn't much to discuss because certain individuals scored certain parts of the application at phase two and the zoning and all that was done by Phil and I think Steve Desolat. And so we went by whatever they said because that wasn't the part of the application that I review. However, they did score pretty low and I was just shocked that they were awarded host community agreement.
And and if I could just add, Mr. President, I did have a conversation with the administrator from phase one. Not not, not only today, but when she was still here. And folks were talking about the whole delivery, you know, the the different type of delivery licenses. And it is my understanding that on numerous occasions, folks had advised that the administration come before the city council and get it changed in advance of the HCAs. And I know consultant attorney Steiner is here, but my understanding is that discussion what occurred quite often and that the recommendation was that folks come before us before we even started the selection process so that we could change the ord- the zoning ordinance so that they're they're applicable. And that clearly didn't occur.
Well, yeah, I appreciate that, Counselor Hurson and Counselor Whitfield, I just think that 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 would have kind of alleviated a lot of discussion around this particular finding. I I I would think that that would be a best effort, you know, for for the administration to actually, you know, whether through a subcommittee or whatever the case may be, bring bring forth that information or or the the, you know, because it was not clear, speak about some of the the issues that, you know, some of the committee members had or the administration had around whether it was actually permissible. So I'm not going to belabor the point, but I think that that was a misstep for sure and would have alleviated the the talk around this particular finding.
Thank you, Council President Williams, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counsel President Williams, so pretty much a similar question I was going to ask. But if I would just give a little different twist on that particular subject. Auditor, no, so I just want to make sure that I understand this clearly, this particular company, transportation company, in the selection process, it was noted that they did not meet the buffer requirement as per city ordinance as of today. And yet they were pushed, they went through and they were given a a contract, correct? They were selected.
Yes, but but again, there was a process involved in that they.
Yes.
A legal involved a- and and make, you know, and they got counsel from that department. So there was a process in place to move along this particular applicant.
But do you think that's kind of hedging the bets? Because who's, is there any guarantees, like the wise body of the city council is going to change the ordinance?
Excuse me, I I didn't hear your question.
I'm just trying to figure this out, Auditor, no, because I think the way I'm looking at it, at least from this side of the world, I think we're kind of hedging our bets here or putting the the horse, the cart before the horse. Because who's, what's going to guarantee that the wise city body, wise body of the city council is going to make the change in the city council? In other words, if the city council doesn't change the ordinance, what's going to happen to this to this proposal?
Well, again, you know, it's a finding, you know, it it says what it says, that the ordinance needs it needs to be updated. I think, you know, there was a process in place and it makes sense for the city to move this company along because they had no marijuana on on the premise, so.
That brings me, that brings me to my other point, that brings me to my, to my other point, Auditor, which I'm comfortable with. I don't know any single transportation company that doesn't finish their deliveries. At some point, they are not going to finish all the deliveries, where are they going to keep the marijuana?
Well, I mean, so what are you asking with that question?
You have seen repeatedly during this meeting today that this particular company, they are not going to have marijuana on the premises.
Right.
And what I'm, what I'm arguing, Auditor, is that I don't know any single transportation company that is able to finish all the runs and all the deliveries in a single day, they are always going to have some overflow. So where are they going to keep the marijuana?
Yeah, that was outside of our scope.
But yeah, but no, I understand that, but yet, but yet you you telling us that he didn't have marijuana on the premises. So I'm just pointing that out because I'm having, in this particular issues, I'm having a lot of difficulties understanding this. How can something that was not within the law as written, whether or not the city council decides to update it, that remains to be seen? But that should have been some huge red flags and why went through is really beyond my understanding. And and, you know, what are they going to do with the marijuana, I don't expect you to tell me the answer. Because, you know, on this, and we haven't seen any proposals, so I'm just trying to figure, sitting here scratching my head with this particular one. And so why should we change the law just to accommodate a particular entities, really beyond me? Just making this observation, Auditor, and Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Attorney Steiner, do you want to chime in on this particular issue?
Hold on, Auditor, no, the 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 better question is, would Counselor, does Counselor Davila want the attorney to chime in? Either Solicitor Pacula or Attorney Steiner as it relates to your question?
If there is a fit.
Solicitor, I saw your hand up first.
We're going to have a potential.
We 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 do only have fourteen minutes, and so I do want to get to findings three and four. So Solicitor, if you could just be brief.
Let me just very briefly, so I know this is called delivery, transportation. Actually, it's a dispatch office. So there's never any marijuana, there's never any trucks there, there's no place to store anything there. And so this ordinance was written without contemplating that someone licensed from the Cannabis Control Commission would never have possession of any marijuana at their place of business. It's something that, it's not a question of anything but being fair and applying the ordinances fairly. It would be unfair to say to somebody, because you have a license from the Cannabis Control Commission, you have to be treated differently than some other dispatch office. That would be arbitrary and capricious. This portion of the ordinance was unenforceable against this applicant, it's as simple as that.
So, Mr. President, if, Mr. Chair, if I may, so. Solicitor, I just want to make sure that I understand it correctly. So I asked my question again. If the city council decides within their wisdom not to update the law, what's going to happen with this particular applicant?
From a legal standpoint, you are sued over being arbitrary and capricious and not giving them a license because they're supposed to comply with something that's unenforceable against them.
Is the administration just going to issue? Well. What was my question for later, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Counselor Davila, and we can certainly have a follow up subcommittee meeting. I think there's, that there's probably a lot more discussion that needs to be had, which is why it probably should have. Probably, which is why it should have come before the council first. Krista, I see your hand up, I don't know if you're affiliated with someone or if you're a member of the public. If you could just please announce yourself and let me know who you are.
Yeah, my name's Steven and I am using my daughter's phone, I'm sorry because mine died out.
Okay, Steven, are you a member of the public?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I'm, what I'm going to do is at the end of the meeting, Steven, I'm going to circle back around to those individuals from the public who have questions and hopefully we can get them answered at that point in time. I do want to get through the rest of the audit first.
Being a member of the public, would that be the same as a participant in this process?
So, yeah, either way, I I either way, at the end of the meeting, we will circle back around to you. But the short answer is yes.
Okay.
Counselor Whitfield?
I just wanted to say that when these applications were presented, they weren't presented as dispatch service. They were presented as delivery or some type of transportation company, not a ditch dispatch service. I want to request that we have an executive session on the other issue. And I also want to request that all of the applications are given to the city council along with the scoring. This is public record, we can put in a public record request either way. Because my ask for getting the scoring sheets in the first round was not was not done. And so I want you all to see how these companies were scored and I want you to see what was presented in the application so you can get a better idea of how they were presented. It wasn't presented as a dispatch company.
So I would agree with you, Counselor Whitfield, I did have an open, I did have a a request for the public records or in the public records department to give us the or make public the scores as well as the rankings. And actually, it was down earlier this morning. And so I will refile that request with everything that you just asked for, along with any of the additional evidence that, Auditor, no use to identify that folks, that there were errors in the scoring of individual applicants. So hopefully we can get access to all of that information.
And please make sure you request the applications.
Yes, absolutely. Order to know, if we can move on to findings number three and number four. I do see there's an iPhone with your hand raised. I will circle back around to all those individuals who are members of the public at the very end, unless that iPhone user is a counselor.
Okay, so finding three was that the composition of the selection committee, as stated by the city ordinance, designated of members, I think there were nine members that was supposed to be on the selection committee for phase one. There were eleven, which included a member from city council and procurement. And phase two, they also had eleven members that included a member from city council and an additional member from planning. So here is just, just clarify, our recommendation is just clarifying the ordinance, saying that, you know, it should be at least nine members. The administration could add more if if they want, but I I think it just needs to be further clarified. Simple as that.
Thank you, are there any questions from the council regarding this finding? Seeing none, order to know, can you move on to the final finding?
So.
Counselor Whitfield, did you have a question on this one?
No, I could bring that up during the amendment process, thank you.
Okay.
So our final finding has to do with the critical documents that were missing during phase one, which limited our scope to audit this phase. So that we knew, we noted numerous score sheets being missing. And there was some subsequent information that was placed on a shared drive in the law department before the city clerk left or or as she was work, the administrator was working the law department at this time, had uploaded, which could not be clarified. They, I didn't know if they were her notes or if they were actual scorecards. So that information could not be corroborated. So, uh, that information could not be corroborated, uh, with her. So with that said, uh, our, our, our audit, we could not audit fully, uh, phase one.
Thank you, auditor, no. Are there any questions from the council? All right, uh, seeing none around finding number four, um, uh, Solicitor Pacula, it seems to me like you've already pretty much spoke to your memo based off of what I've read. Uh, just quick question for you. Um, can you let us know and let the general public know? Uh, what is public from, uh, both phase one and phase two in your estimation? Uh, with respect to, um, the scores, the rankings, the app, the, um, app, the applications? What is public? Uh, so I, so I know what to ask for and what you're saying that you can't provide uh, in the event that I need to ask the Attorney General.
So generally speaking, everything's a public record unless there is some exemption. So most likely what you would receive is the documents you request with redactions for those portions which are not public. So for example, it's the, the application. Okay, here's the application, it's a public record, except if there's some things in there that are exempt. For example, was there financial information, social security numbers, a bank account information, uh, that type of thing. And generally speaking, that goes with, you know, how all the records are done. We, 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 we start with the premise that everything is a public record. And then we determine if there's any applicable exemptions.
Got it. Um, and so, uh, have, have, do we notify the individual applicants of where they placed and what their scores are so that they know how to improve and possibly be, uh, included in the next phase? Is that, is that something that we do and if, and if not, why not?
My recollection is we do and we have done that and I think we've done that in both phases.
So you did, so the applicant, so the applicants know exactly where they place right now. Uh, and, and they know their scores. You, you believe or you, or you know?
Yeah, that's not something that I do.
Okay.
You know, but I, you know, this was all done through procurement.
Got it, got it.
I, I, I remember specifically in the first phase, um, uh, providing that uh, or being asked to rule on what we could and, and it was two, two parts. One, here's the ranking and that was done initially, once we had everything set. And then after we were all done, people asked for their scores, we provided those.
Okay, so I've asked procurement for the rankings and, and, and have yet to get those. So if you could just help expedite that so I can, so it's one less item that I can include in my public records request, it'd be greatly appreciated. Uh, I know there were members of the public, uh, who had a quick question. What I will do is I will offer each of you, uh, one question, uh, to ask. If it can be answered, uh, then, um, we will get it answered. So if you have a question at this time, uh, please raise your hand in the queue. And please note, you have three minutes. So, uh, Krista.
I, I, my question is, okay. My question is, we brought this cultivation issue up and zoning up on Page Boulevard. There's been no, no, um, discussion on that issue. They were in violation of the zoning in front at the time they submitted their RFQ. We brought to the city's attention that fact after they were selected. We also brought to the city's that afterwards, they were in violation in 118 feet in the rear of their application. They went down on a Friday, redid their, uh, registered deeds, redid their zoning after they were selected. If you're disqualifying somebody in the first round because they don't meet the zoning requirements, you can't allow another applicant to move forward after they're, they're, they're in violation on two fronts. My question is, would the selection committee or were they notified that there was a violation in the front and in the rear when they were making that selection process and selected Page Boulevard? Because I don't believe they were ever notified of that fact. And they shouldn't even have been able to move forward anyways. And can't amend your zoning after you're selected. And this is, this is exactly where we were at here. And there's been no discussion with my partner, his wife on any of the issues here as far as the zoning on Page Boulevard. That's my question.
Thank you so much for the question. Uh, we appreciate it. And then again, to the general public, if we need to hold another, uh, meeting, um, then I, I'm sure we can do that. Uh, Counsel Whitfield, I see you have your hand raised. You were part of the selection process. Were you notified?
Yes. So in the selection meeting, we were notified by Phil Dromy that, um, the location may be, um, short of, um, meeting the zoning requirement. At that time, they said that they could have a survey done to see if it meets the zoning requirement on the front end, not on the backside. And so I got emails where I asked for the survey to see if they met the zoning requirements on a couple of occasions. I called Theo, I think I sent it to Attorney Pacula and, um, Attorney Theo, Theocles. I don't want to mess the name up, but, um, I, I did ask for the survey on a couple of occasions because that was before, um, the information on the back end came out. I didn't know that they didn't meet the zoning requirements on the back end. That wasn't told to us by Steve or, um, Phil. But on the front end, it was disclosed when we were reviewing the application and they said that they should probably get a survey done because based on the G I S, um, mapping, it could be, it could really meet the zoning requirements or it could be a little bit short. So they should have got a survey. So I waited to see if we ever were going to get a survey and that never transpired.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. I will give, uh, Solicitor Pacula just a quick second to respond if he, if he wishes to. Otherwise, I'd imagine that this, you know, my hope is that this can be handled offline. It seems like there ought to be able to, be able to have a conversation between, um, this particular applicant and someone from zoning and/or the law department. Solicitor.
Yeah, um, I, like I said, I don't know who iPhone James is and he clearly has a sort of best interest. But let me just say the, the, what it came down to was, and I issued a legal opinion on this. I believe Attorney Counselor West, uh, Whitfield has it. I gave it to the mayor. I don't know. I must have given it out because.
Yeah, we received it.
Okay, but so, hey, you know, as I had said in that opinion, as, since, since you have it, I'll just refer to that. Um, it was an issue with, uh, and I believe whoever iPhone James is or Krista or whoever said something about the back part and the front part. And as Counselor Whitfield noted, surveys. Well, it all came down to it, uh, the fact that in the quote back part, uh, there was, uh, clearly not needing the buffer, but it was a proposal. It was a A and R, which stands for approval not required. So there was no, uh, sort of prejudice to anyone. All of the drawing of the lines were in the control of the applicant. And instead of having surveys or whatever, they just submitted a new N A A and R plan, which they had every right to do. And, uh, that ended the problem.
All right. Uh, thank you, Solicitor. Hopefully if there are further questions and they can be discussed, uh, offline. Um, iPhone James, I want to get to you and then we're going to wrap up with, uh, with your questions, sir.
Thanks, thanks. Appreciate the time, everybody. If you can hear me, give me a thumbs up.
We can.
Good. Um, my question again was referring to the, uh, finding number one. The second half of it, uh, there was, you, you were in the middle of discussing it and then kind of jumped back to the first part. I'm wondering if we could just discuss that second part of the, um, applicant who had gotten seventh place now should, is considered possibly being fifth. And is, is there anything that's going to be done, uh, for that applicant?
I, I'll defer to the solicitor. I think we, I think I did ask that question, but I, uh, Solicitor, if, um, if you want to chime in and/or the auditor.
I, I think like I, I said, um, you know, this audit is, uh, uh, you know, just came out. Uh, I think we're all looking at it and, uh, reviewing it and, uh, you know, I, we don't have, uh, any definitive plans at this point and, and, and we'll, uh, we'll figure out the best course of action going forward.
Well, as, as, as that applicant, I would like to say, if you would like to have a conversation with us offline, we're, we're more than happy to do.
All right. I, I don't know how to contact you, iPhone James, but, uh, if you, you know, if you want to reach me, epecula@springfieldcityhall.com.
That's great. And I can send, um, a, uh, response to the email that I have from Keltman Hearst and we can get that all together, I'm sure.
Uh, please, that, um, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, uh, Solicitor, uh, Pacula, um, thank you for being here.
Welcome.
Julie Steiner, um, Attorney Steiner, thank you for being here, auditor, no. Uh, appreciate your thoroughness, uh, in your report, uh, and your, your independence. Um, certainly greatly appreciated to those on the committee. Uh, thank you for joining us, uh, to Counsel Whitfield, who was on the selection committee. Uh, we appreciate all of your hard work and, um, you know, uh, I think this certainly made the process a bit more, uh, transparent for the general public. And so to that, auditor, no, I'm greatly appreciative of your work. So thank you and your team and, uh, have a great evening. Thank you, everybody.